Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Kathleen, roll call here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambo?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
All right, we have proclamations. We'll start with the day of prayer.
Whereas the national day of prayer is a tradition first proclaimed by the Continental Congress in 1775, and whereas in 1988 legislation setting aside the first Thursday in May in each year as the national day of prayer was adopted, and whereas Congress has declared Thursday, May 4th, 2017, as the 66th consecutive observance of the national day of prayer, and whereas it's fitting and proper to give thanks to God by observing this day in Burlington, Iowa, when all may acknowledge our blessings and express gratitude for them. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2017, as a day of prayer in Burlington, Iowa, and urge the citizens of Burlington, Iowa to observe this day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance. Signed and sealed this first day of May, 2017, Shayna McCambo, Mayor. Pastor Sam Frat is here to receive this proclamation.
Thank you. Every year, we have a day of prayer. We gather together at all churches and we pray for our leaders, including you.
Thank you.
Pray for our officers, our fire department here, our streets, our community, our businesses, our government, our federal. We just cover everybody in prayer. And not only here, but it goes on all across the United States. So it's a wonderful day. And as always, Mayor, I invite you to come and read this proclamation that night, if you're able to. If not, another member, if you're there, invite you to read this proclamation that night. It's this Thursday, May 5th, at the Bethany Lutheran Church this year, across from Dankford Park at 6:30.
May 4th, right?
May 4th. What did I say?
5th.
May 5th. All right. May 4th. Yeah, so anyhow, we welcome you and thank you for this proclamation. And I do apologize, I gotta be at a meeting here shortly, so I do have to leave. But thank you for just recognition.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Thanks for coming down. You are more than welcome to leave. Again, we appreciate you coming down. Thanks. All right. Next, we have Teach Children to Save Day.
Proclamation whereas the American Bankers Association's Education Foundation established the National Teach Children to Save Day to spotlight the importance of teaching our nation's youth about saving money. They have set aside April 28th, 2017, for bankers across America to teach young people about how money works and how to use it wisely. And whereas according to the U.S. Department of Commerce, our small loan national savings rate rivals the rates during the Great Depression, and whereas the current economy, rising number of Americans' personal bankruptcies, especially with young adults under 25 years of age, college students graduating with increasing student loan debt, the increase in consumer credit card debt, the lack of school personal finance classes, and the lack of adequate retirement savings emphasizes the importance of introducing children to the concept of saving money as a first step to their healthy financial future. And whereas recognizing that young Iowans are our leaders of tomorrow, bankers and the Iowa Bankers Association are taking a stand to combat financial illiteracy. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2017, as Teach Children to Save Day. Good savings habits start early, and a healthy money skills lasts a lifetime. Signed and sealed this first day of May, 2017, Shayna McCambo, Mayor.
Come on down.
There's quite a group for...
How many kids? How many safers do we have tonight?
There's a lot.
How many? All right. What's your name, sir?
Mateo Roscon.
All right, mister. How about let me get you one of those on the mirror real quick?
Hi, I am Mateo Roscon from Great River Christian School Bank. This year, we have 57 student customers, been open 18 times, deposited $7,210.50. Grand total saved $29,654.92. Our school grown-up educator staff has nine customers who saved $5,259.21 this year. This year, I learned that banking is lots of fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Who's next? Come on down. All right. State your name, sir.
Kayden Schwanker.
All right. Well, let me give you one of these, Kayden. All right. Thanks for coming down.
Hello, I am Kayden Schwanker from Notre Dame Kid's Count Bank. This year, we have 117 customers, have been open 28 times, and have deposited $19,644.90. And a grand total saved of $68,416.30. Our school grown-up educator and staff has eight customers who have saved $4,230. This year, I learned the importance of saving money for my future. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Man, look at that here. Could be somebody if I had that. Let me give you one of these.
Hello, I am Tasia Peoples from Grimes Bulldog Bank. This year, we've had 85 student customers. Our bank has been open 25 times. The bankers at our school have deposited $2,352.25. The total saved at our bank is $8,801.48. Our faculty has five customers who have saved $6,759.59 this year. I have learned a lot by participating in F and M Bank's these past two years, but the two most important things are respect and responsibility.
Thank you.
Who's this? What's your name?
Kirsten Max.
Well, Kirsten, let me give you one of these.
Hello, I'm Kirsten Max from Blackhawk Bank and Trust. This year, we have been open 144... This year, we have 144 customers. We have been open 19 times so far this year. We have deposited $18,095. Our grand total saved is $41,126.58. Our school grown-up and educators, also staff, has 28 customers who saved $18,095 this year. This year, I learned the importance of having a job as a banker.
Come on. Come on down. Get your toes hanging out. Let me give you one of these real quick.
Hi, I am Alicia Brock from Sunnyside Super Savers Bank. This year, we have 143 customers, been open 28 times, deposited $9,542.50. Our grand total saved is $31,159.1. Our school grown-up educator staff have 146 customers who have saved $7,059.1. Or $7,059.1 this year. This year, I learned the true meaning of responsibility and many new math skills. These skills will last me a lifetime. Thank you.
Next. All right. Let me give you one of these. Okay.
Hi, I'm Inka Boomire from North Hill Schools, our Future Savings Bank. This year had 77 customers and was open 20 times. $2,692.74 was deposited with a grand total saved of $10,531.41. Our school staff had 13 accounts and saved $5,760.50. This year, I learned how easy it is to save money if you regularly make deposits. Thank you.
Who's next? All right. All right, lay it on us.
Hello, I am Lorley Weaver from Saving Up with Core School Bank. This year, we have 67 student customers, been open 17 times, deposited $4,203.32. Grand total saved is $20,289.79. Our school grown-up staff has 17 customers who saved $6,560. I learned how fun it is being a board of director. Thank you.
My last one? All right.
Good evening. I'm Vicky Bredar, Kids Bank Coordinator, F and M Bank and Trust. And this year, we're celebrating our 20th year in business. The first Kids Bank was opened at North Hill 20 years ago. I'm gonna total up with all the numbers that the kids just gave you. We have 806 student employees... Excuse me, students that are employees. And then $73,981 of deposits this year.
Wow.
Adding them all up. And total on deposit, and this amount includes West Burlington, but $252,051.
Wow.
They have on deposit, on savings.
Man, we could rebuild Cascade Bridge.
And the grown-ups... We've had $60,000 that the grown-ups have saved this year. The teachers and the staff members are allowed to participate. We have a great program in the elementary school, and it graduates into the middle school. All the middle schools now participate. And then it also now is in the high schools. So we've grown tremendously. Do you guys have any questions?
Just to commend you, keep it up. Way to go.
Good work. I have a question. Where are these kids getting all this money from?
I don't know. You know, there's a $25 limit, so it's not like grandma's putting a bunch of money in their account. It's a limit of $25 a week, so...
Somebody's doing their chores.
Yeah, they sure are.
Well done.
Good job.
Well done. Good work. Again, thanks to you guys. You guys come back and visit us very, very soon. We'll be looking forward to hearing how you guys are progressing. And if you want to dip on out of here, you're more than welcome to leave now, too. Okay, next, we are recognizing Municipal Clerks Week.
Your Honor, whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. The office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants and provides professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of governments at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be very mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, municipal clerk service serves as an information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. Now therefore, be it resolved, we the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do recognize the week of May 7th through May 13th as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk Kathleen P. Salisbury, and to all municipal clerks with the vital services they perform and exemplary dedication to their communities they represent. Signed and sealed the first day of May, 2017, Shayna McCambo, Mayor.
And may I add, we have the best municipal clerk, so... Kathleen? You're a rock star, my friend. We're blessed to have you. We truly are.
Kathleen, congratulations.
Kathleen P., would you please have a word? I'm gonna get beat up for this later, but it's worth it for right now.
I normally don't get to speak, so this is different for me. I do appreciate you proclaiming the week, next week, as Municipal Clerks Week, and I enjoy serving you as your municipal clerk. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have two Mayor's Awards tonight and two fantastic people. The first one I'll just be getting to see tonight for the first time. But what a fantastic... When you get people that will donate their time and give of themselves freely, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. Because you just don't see that nowadays like you used to back when I was just a little boy. But these things need to be recognized. And we have great people in this community. I'm really excited to be giving these awards tonight. So first one, be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I'd like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your dedication to your field, your desire to help others, and your commitment to your community, your fellow man, and our fire department. Help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On May 1st, 2017, this Mayor's Award is presented to Aaron Brown. Come on down. Look at the muscles on this guy, man. Look at this guy, man. Don't hurt me. He said I won't hurt you. Let me give you one of these, my friend. Aaron, we certainly appreciate... We appreciate you, man. We'll be going trick or treating so I can get the thing cool. Would you have a few words, please?
I'd like to thank not only be my boss, Sheena, and then her boss, Jeff. Without their approval, we would never have been able to help the Burlington Fire Department with the workout program and just to better the guys in it. Most of the guys on shift one are here today. Which was surprising.
Which is surprising.
I didn't see them this morning at workouts. I'd like to thank the mayor for this award. Usually, I don't do this to get recognition, but it is appreciated when people do recognize it. So thank you.
Thank you.
He's a winner. And we've got another winner today for helping out with the same process. And I just want to say to this winner, to Hillary, I know your mama, and I know your daddy, and the wonderful people. But this award is for you. You deserve this award, and you earned this award. It has nothing to do with your folks. So let that be told. Mayor's Award, be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I'd like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your dedication to your field, your desire to help others, and your commitment to your community, your fellow man, and our fire department helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play, and be healthy. On May 1st, 2017, this Mayor's Award is presented to Hillary Beard. Come on down. Hillary Beard. You're a winner, my friend. Would you please have a word?
Hello, I am Hillary Beard, and I am very, very appreciative of this Mayor's Award. Thank you very much. I also would like to thank Great River and Sheena and Jeff for allowing us to be able to do this with the firefighters and provide the service that we did and that we will continue to do because it's so awesome. And we've really seen a lot of good numbers and good progress. And that's all. Shout out to the firefighters. They really put in the work ethic. They put in the time. I'd like to thank Aaron for doing all the programs and a lot of other colleagues that we have. They're the drivers behind this. And it's really awesome to work with great coworkers and have such a great teamwork.
That's very true. Awesome. Very good.
And we'd also like to thank the city for allowing us to run on the streets and flip tires on the streets and use the fire department weightlifting facility that they have there, too. And so thank you very much. This is very, very appreciated. And I would follow up with what Aaron said. This is not something that we do to be recognized, but it sure does feel good. Like I said, the firefighters are the ones that really deserve this award, too, because they're the ones putting in all the hard work and sweat and running up and down those stairs and flipping some tires.
I thought you were working.
Yes, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Hillary.
Awesome. Well, if you guys want to dip on now, go on and get on out of here, too, and we'll finish up tonight. Tree? Next on the agenda, tonight we have the consent agenda. They're a fantastic group. Next on the agenda tonight, we have the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes reports and bonds. We have two resolutions. The first is a resolution approving demolition, nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution accepting legacy drive right-of-way. We have set date for public carings for May 15th. First is consideration of an amendment to ordinance number 3403, an ordinance creating the Arbor View Estates PUD. Second is consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property, locally known as H-16 Valley Street, from M1 Light Industrial to C3 Central Business District, downtown mixed-use zoning district. The third is consideration of plans and specifications for the demolition of the property located at 715 Chaka Khan Drive, Burlington, Iowa. The fourth is consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 Agency Street Widening Project West End. The fifth is consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 erosion mitigation at corner of North Street and North 4th Street. The sixth is consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 137, sidewalk regulations of the Burlington Municipal Code. The seventh is consideration of budget amendment number 1 for fiscal year 2016/2017 budget. And we also have one appointment.
The Low-Rand Housing Agency has a vacancy, and Nancy Kavanis has applied for the position, so we recommend her, Mayor.
Well done. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed? I see none. Council?
None for me.
Remove that all matters listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and be approved.
Second.
Kathleen?
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambo?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Hi.
Okay. This is a consideration of an ordinance of vacating and selling a portion of Spruce Street right-of-way located west of South Main Street, and a portion of Valley right-of-way located north of Spruce Street and west of South Main Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
This again is, excuse me, Spruce Street, located directly west of Main Street and a portion of the alley between Angular and Spruce Street. The applicant, Michael and Sally Campbell, have desired to expand their property area. They own the property at 223 Angular Street and have wished to expand it onto the property at 629 South Main, including a portion of the right-of-way adjacent to and between the properties. This did go to the planning commission on March 21st and was voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the vacating of the described right-of-way based on the applicant petition. The applicant owning property adjacent to the right-of-way, maintenance of utility easements, and continued access for the property located at 213 Spruce Street. Right now, the property, right at the bottom of the map, does have their driveway on approximately the west... or the south half of Spruce Street, so that would not be affected. That would be maintained with this vacation. Easement would be retained over the vacated right-of-way for a private sewer located in the right-of-way being vacated and public utility access. There are some overhead lines through the alley. Sale price of the vacated right-of-way would be $3,000. And again, this would be combined with the adjacent property at 629 South Main with access being maintained to the other properties.
Anybody from the audience, questions or concerns? I see none.
Eric, did you say that last week, the property at 611 is not impacted?
Correct. There's a retaining wall behind this property. There's no access from the alley to that property. We did send out notices to all the properties adjacent to the alley and street and did not receive any comment or concern from them. But there would not be any direct access from that alley regardless.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Move to close?
Second. Moved to second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambo?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Hi.
Davidson?
I motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance, an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Spruce Street right-of-way located west of South Main Street, and a portion of Valley right-of-way located north of Spruce Street and west of South Main Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second. Moved in second three times. Just want to cover our bases, kids.
Mr. Fleming wants to be included.
Don't leave anybody out today. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambo?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Hi.
Davidson?
Okay. First reading. Two more to go on here. This is time for consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Art Guild of Burlington, Inc. for encroachment into the city right-of-way adjacent to the property located at 301 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa.
This is a request by the Art Guild, the Art Center, to place a sculpture in front of their property at 301 Jefferson. They have a design that they're looking at to place within Jefferson Street right-of-way. Second image here, just showing approximately the location that they've requested this to be placed at. It is at the corner of Third and Jefferson Street, within a portion of right-of-way that is not a primary travel portion for pedestrians. A couple of the requirements for the encroachment is to maintain proper access for pedestrians through the sidewalk area, which they would do, and maintaining clear distance from the adjacent trees so that our future trees is not directly affected as well. General location would be just to the west of the existing tree. Excuse me, approximately three feet and four feet off of the curb. While this would maintain approximately 12 feet from the Art Center building. They do have encroachment for outdoor seating in that area, but this would still maintain the clear travelway of at least five feet. And this shows, again, the general location in front of the Art Center on Jefferson Street right-of-way. So if you have any other questions, Ms. McCoy is here with the Art Center as well. Maybe answer any other questions, but...
Let's start with the audience. Any questions or concerns from the audience? Counsel?
Sounds great.
No one down. Looked at the area. Looks like plenty of rooms. Sounds good to me, too. You guys get that? Let's take it.
I'm good. Motion to close?
Motion to close, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambo?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Hi.
Davidson?
Hi.
Round of a resolution approving a permanent encroachment agreement with the Art Guild of Burlington Incorporated with encroachment into the city right-of-way adjacent to the property located at 301 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Moved to second.
Pretty good.
Take it to vote, Kathleen.
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambo?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Hi.
Davidson?
Hi.
Okay, good job. Next, we have consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 Seal Coat Streets Program. You like that, don't you?
I do. I like being down here. I can't look with my back there. Up here is a map showing the next five years of seal coat planning. I thought it would be better to show kind of the perspective of the next five years of the seal coat. The orange is for 2017. It shows some down further by the park, too. These are chosen to try and stay away from the M A S L sewer separation. There'll be a lot of disruption in the next several years. So, rather than fix the road and go back in and tear it up to do the sewer separation, it's best to probably wait until the sewer separation happens. So, if you throw up the budget numbers, we'll talk about that a little bit. Our engineer's estimate is at 383,507. And the alternative bid below is the pea gravel or the crushed pea gravel. That would be an alternative to line item number two, the double, it's...
Beeduminas?
I can't say that word.
Beeduminas? Beeduminas?
I will try and say it.
Beeduminas.
Byeduminas.
In the end, last year, we used the crushed pea gravel and it worked fairly well to keep the dust down. So, if, when we go out to bid, depending on what the bids come in at, we will bring that back before you to show you the alternative prices and hopefully pea gravel. It was fairly comparable last year, so...
Good deal.
And the budget is how much?
It is 400, budget was 450,000. The estimated cost is 380. It's 70,000 under budget, so we probably could knock out a few more roads.
Is that we're going to try to do?
Depending on what bids come in at, we have unit prices and we'll try and look at maybe doing some shorter sections.
Great.
Good deal. Any questions from the audience? Lovely audience tonight.
Gosh, we could do more.
Bob, have him do more for that price. Counsel?
I was wondering if there's anywhere online that we can view that map?
Yes, we have a project page underneath our engineering. We are discussing to put stuff on Facebook as things come online that will lead you back to our website where most of the information is. So, it's been a fairly decent forum with the roundabout to push that information out that links back to the website. So, we'll be doing that with all of our projects, but yes, there's a, there'll be a project page that'll show the overall. I don't know if it's on there right now. I couldn't tell you that. It will be. That's the answer I'll give you.
Okay. That's it.
Gave me too long to think about it.
I already closed up. I already closed up.
What?
No, go ahead. I'm just messing with you. I already shut her down. Go ahead.
How often do you do this?
We do it annually.
Oh, Marlon McKee, 1121 South 12th Street, sorry. How often do you do this?
We do the seal coat annually.
How often are you going to be doing these streets again?
We try and get on a seven-year rotation.
How much would it cost to pave them?
Seal coat per square foot is the least, concrete's the least costly for lifespan maintenance costs. Seal coat shall follow shortly after that. The reconstruction costs, I couldn't answer that question tonight.
I just know that...
It's fairly expensive to go in there and demo all that and do concrete.
Back in the seventies, Medialis went up and tore out all their seal coat streets. They did it section at a time and paved them. It made it so that they didn't have to go back and do it every seven years, and it made it so it was a lot easier to do the snow removal. So, my question is, if you're going to do it every seven years, where would the payback be to go in and do a block at a time or two blocks at a time? And by the way, they did it with their employees instead of contracted it out. And they had five people that worked for them. They used two sewer people and three people that worked for the city, but it's just something to look at is, instead of doing it every seven years, how about paving sections of it?
It's something that could be, sorry, but it's something that could be looked at, but I don't have those answers of whether or not it makes more sense to pave them in concrete or to continue them with seal coat. I know if you were to do concrete, the cost of the, down the road is much more expensive than continuing to maintain it.
Well, I know that there's a block in my neighborhood that is seal-coated and everything around it is paved. And it's just kind of stupid. Why is this one street, one block, seal-coated and everything else is paved?
When we got into seal coating, part of it, Marlon, was to address, because from my understanding and from what I could see, we got way behind on roads. And seal coat was one way that we could address a bigger area for not as much cash flow to try to address.
But if you do it every seven years?
I mean, I hear what you're saying, but again, to address that, to start your plan, that's going to put us behind, as far as what I can see, that's going to put us behind even more so. We were already behind on streets and, you know...
I know, I remember a while back, and I can't remember exactly, they were assessing people for seal coating their streets. 1985?
Sorry, I wouldn't play with you.
So... Counsel was quickly terminated. The counsel was? Yeah, by the voters. Do you know, do you know what the mileage is that you're going to do this year?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. With the, in the bid item, it might have a linear foot listing. Yeah, it's in square yards. I couldn't compute that in my head. I can get that information to you, though, on what the lane miles are.
If memory serves me right, you can do about three miles of seal coat for equal to one block of tearing out, seal coat and putting down concrete. That's one of the reasons why we stuck with seal coat. We have roughly 35 miles of seal-coated streets, not three or five blocks, but 35 miles of seal-coated streets. And to maintain that volume, that's been the challenge. But in the early 2000s, we put together a program that neighbors, neighborhoods could petition to have the streets, their streets upgraded from seal coat to concrete, and the city paid 75 percent and the property owners paid 25 percent. The block that I live on was actually one of those that was petitioned for. And it's, I'm really glad we did. We had ditches on both sides and we had a relatively high crown in the middle of the street that left the ditches constantly wet even during the driest time of the year. That option was out there, and I'd like to see if there would be others that would like to take a look at that again sometime. Counsel, it was a relatively successful program. I think we ended up with nine or 10 blocks of, but we were able to get nine or 10 blocks we'd only have to go back to every seven years to maintain. It's been close to 20 years now, and we've done very little maintenance on my street, so, by comparison. Marlon's right. That's what he's saying. It's just being able to get there is the problem thing, usually.
That creates the way to go if you can, but...
Well, I know that a couple of years ago, we did, and I don't know if we're still doing it, went up and resurfaced like Sycamore Street from Sixth to Eighth or Ninth. It was like two or three block. There's like 10 houses on that. And we paid beaucoup bucks to do it, and it was through asphalt over concrete. And we wanted, that year, they had a whole list of them, and I drove every one of them, and it was like, why are we doing this? For the number of cars that are traveling on this, we should be out doing Central Avenue instead of doing Sycamore Street or all the rest of them. They were up on North Hill, but it was still, we went in blacktop over the top of concrete streets that didn't have 20 cars riding over it every day. Anyway.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, are we good?
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2017 Seal Coat Street Programs.
Second.
Kathleen, let's take a vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
All right, getting her done. Next is consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 Burlington Flint River Trail Phase One South. Mr. Tisland?
This is the portion of trail from the ramp that comes up from Riverside Park behind Big Muddy's up to Bluff Road. It'll commence at that point and continue north until Oak Street. This is one of the final phases of the trail to be complete. We have one other section between Cash Street and Oak Street that would complete the connection from downtown to, within the city's portion of the Flint River Trail. So, we are getting a little bit closer. This shows the extent of the trail for the space with the ramp behind Big Muddy's Riverside Park continuing on the east side of Bluff Road behind the existing barrier wall up to approximately Oak Street. Bids are being accepted through May 11th at 2:00 PM. This is set up as a completion date contract with work fully completed by October 13th, 2017. The project budget and estimate is at $735,000. There will be some closures along Bluff Road for one lane of traffic that will be signalized during some of the construction portions of this. Again, this is approving the plans and specs with accepting bids through May 11th and hope to award last meeting in May or first meeting in June contract based on the bid amounts.
Any concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Not for me. Not good. I have a motion to close?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2017 Burlington Flint River Trail Phase One South.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen wants to vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Good deal.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption, the second reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the Deer Point Estates Urban Renewal Area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. Second.
Moved in second.
This again is to allow the use of tax increment financing funds for the project in the urban renewal area. That was approved by counsel for the Deer Point Estates Urban Renewal Area. This is located south of Pesner between South 14th Street and Summer Street. Planned for 34 lots, projected in two phases, 25 lots in the first phase and nine lots in the second phase, being developed by Mr. Negrocki. This ordinance, again, is just an ordinance that, through the process, that allows the division of taxes, allows the use of TIF funds. It still does require additional reading beyond the state and approval of a development agreement is required, setting up the terms of the use of TIF, as was talked about, whether there's a cap on the sale price of the housing and how that's all set up, the terms, number of years, how that's phased in. So, this ordinance here is just to allow the use of TIF funds. There is one more reading, and then the final step would be the actual development agreement that would be considered by the council. Mr. Negrocki is here and would like to go through what his project is doing.
Good evening, counsel. Just going to do another quick refresher, go through the presentation, and it's been a while since I kind of went through some of this. I know we've been here before, but just wanted to go through some of it again. My name's Ryan Negrocki with Midwest Realty Group. We're proposing Deer Point Estates subdivision. It's out, as Eric mentioned, by the airport. It's a 34-lot subdivision. The price point of the homes we envision is 180,000 to 275,000. There will be some covenants and restrictions to encourage consistent building of the homes. We will be selling lots to local builders. This project will open up land for future development down the road, and our goal is to break ground yet this spring. About a year ago, there was a housing assessment overview study that was done here in Des Moines County, and they said that if more residential development is not facilitated, then there's downward pressure for the housing market. A third of the housing units here in the county are 75 years or older and with a median value of $76,000. That study noted a tight supply of homes in the 180 to 260,000 dollar price range was showing an estimated excess of four units to 2025. Currently, I'll go over a couple presentations or slides here that'll show that, right now, due to the cost of putting in the roads and the sewer and the storm sewer, it's not feasible to be able to build homes under that 270 price point. This here is just the chart that Grun and Grun did, showing the future demand of housing. Approximately 77 percent of the housing units here in Des Moines County will have to be priced at 260,000 or under. The people that cannot afford above that. There was, again, that tight supply from the 180,000 to 260,000 demand that showed there. This here, I'm an open, transparent person, so I'm kind of giving you a breakdown here of what my costs are. So, this is based on that subdivision being developed. For the excavation, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, about $547,000. For the street, curb and gutter, it was about $320,000. For all the utilities needed to be ran to the site, $150,000. And then engineering and survey work that needs done is $50,000. And then the land purchase price. So, the total all-in cost is a little over 1.2 million. Investment with a per-lock cost of $35,815. Some challenges faced. Your land and your developed cost, relative to the price of a home, is typically 10 to 15 percent of the sales price of a home. So, currently, you see around town, you'll see average cost of upper 20,000 to, on the high end, 50 to 60,000 for lots in the most desirable locations. Again, my development costs are $35,815. Based on my estimate, so if I was to mark that lot, price up 10 percent, selling those at $39,400, that encourages housing then to be developed at 262,000 on up. And again, back to what the housing study said, that 77 percent of the housing would be from households that cannot afford anything above 260,000. So, this is a request for an urban renewal area. It was created. Today, we're talking about the second reading for the TIF. This will, you know, help create a diverse housing market here in Burlington as building in this price point here in Burlington on this scale is not currently being done. As Eric mentioned, the next step would be to enter into a developer agreement. What we would be requesting is just to explain, this is a TIF rebate. So, basically, it would capture any incremental value that is created within that district of where the subdivision would be, so it wouldn't affect necessarily the other property owners around or not living within that subdivision. And the rebate that would be rebated back to me as the developer would be as fast as I get it developed. If I only build one house a year, then I barely get any refund back to me. You know, this request does positively affect the feasibility of this and minimal financial risk to the city, as all that risk still relies on me. I'm the one borrowing all that money and getting rebated as it goes. This here gives you kind of an idea of what the net effect would be of that TIF rebate. Showed, again, my total cost, a little over the 1.2 million. My total operating cost and carrying cost throughout the life of that project is estimated with interest cost of about $450,000. So, my total developer investment, excuse me, wrong button there. Sorry about that. Of about 1.6 million. The TIF rebate that's shown here, I'll explain this, too, that's been published a lot, is $836,000. When I had worked with Mr. Frenault, he wanted me to give, if I sold every house in that subdivision at $260,000, and if I was able to get it completely built out in three years, that's what that looks like. Now, all my projections that I've done, if I could build 34 homes in three years, I think we're all doing pretty good. And my projections, I think it's going to be a five to seven-year absorption rate. So, hitting that 800,000's pretty unlikely, but just to show, you know, worst-case scenario, best-case scenario, however you want to look at that. Currently, the land is assessed at $32,000 at 11.77 acres. By my estimation, at an average value of 220,000, the total assessment for that area would be a little over $7.4 million. So, increasing... The total assessment for that area would be a little over $7.4 million, so increasing that quite substantially. The city did a comprehensive plan several years ago that stated to evaluate new incentives to remain effective in new housing development, remain competitive to other surrounding communities and what they have to offer. Currently, TIF is being offered in Fort Madison, Mount Pleasant, and Minneapolis. And consider ordinance as programs to encourage development of workforce housing and market-rate housing and to provide incentives for roadway and utility extensions. I've got about 800 feet of road that would have to be put in, about 500 feet from Summer Street to access to the development. And then from on South Fourteenth Street to hit access about another 300, 350 feet to access the development. So this would meet that criteria as well. The city did a goal-setting session last June. You guys supported that housing study and they identified future housing needs. There was noted within their, you know, availability and flexibility of potential TIF funds. They saw an opportunity and a concern for new housing development needs. You saw the lack of housing in different price points. Noted the high infrastructure cost, as I've shown. It increased the cost and there affects the sales price of your homes. Note to consider significant new programs and initiatives for housing in 150 to 250. And again, the roadway slash utility extensions to open up new area for future development as this project would do as well. The benefits to the city of Burlington, South Fourteenth Street would be extended to the development. The benefit would be the landowner to the east then could be developed at some point. I do have a right-of-way agreement in place for that and that would be then given to the city as well. As I've shown, the increased assess evaluation for the property and the increased property tax revenue over time. So kind of long-term, this is what's going to be coming. Permit fee, utility fee income. It creates housing where there's a shown demand here in town. And it does help out with economic development, growth, and employer attraction and retention. And then it also meets the goals that were outlined by the city council and the housing study and the comprehensive plan. Community support, I have had a lot of support. As you guys saw last week, I had here several people and got a support from the Greater Burlington Partnership CEO. Various realtors here in town support the project. A local recruiter for Great River Medical Center supports it as it helps with recruiting new employees to the city of Burlington. Local builders have shown strong interest as there's a short supply of lots available to builders for spec homes or custom-built homes here in town. I've always believed in giving back to the community. And we've got a partnership with the Burlington School District, West Burlington School District, and the SCC Trades Program. What we will do with this is we'll help educate our youth and the future workforce. And we're going to provide four lots and the materials, one at a time, to those students. They will come in, they will build that house with the faculty and my contractors. And then once we market that house and sell it, I'm going to take half those profits and donate it back to the schools so they can help expand that trades program. Kind of goes over that there. And then lastly, just wanted to thank you, you know, for your time in reconsidering this. And with other communities here in the area doing this exact same types of program, I think we can make this work here in Burlington. And I'd open it up to any questions.
Let's start in the audience first and then we'll end up here. Does anybody have any questions from the audience?
Marlon Key, 1121 South 12th Street. My question is, is all the streets going to be put in first thing?
Yes.
All the streets? Out to Summer Street and everything?
Yeah, could you address that counsel for that, please?
All the streets are going to be put in all the way out to Summer Street and everything?
Correct.
Out to Summer Street.
Yeah, he has to have a second access out to Summer Street?
That's correct.
Okay. Is he paying for all the streets or are people north or south and east of him going to be assessed?
No.
Like somebody else was in the past?
No.
Does he, he says he already has the land to the east, does he have the land to the south for this thing?
He did not say he has the land to the east.
He said he had a right-of-way.
That's different than the land.
Well, to put the street in, he has to have the...
He has to have the right-of-way to put the street in.
Okay. So this is only going to be paid back as, to him, as the houses are built?
Correct.
So we're not out any money to start with?
Correct.
Oh, so then the homeowners don't get the rebate done either, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Shan?
Leon Shanhan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I guess I'm bothered by this whole process. I've been at this for almost 25 years. We use tax excrement financing, I did not misspeak, to bring in poverty wage employers. Employees can't afford to buy a home with the wages they make. So as a taxpayer, I get dinged again to provide housing for basically an employer that isn't paying a fair wage, yet we've given them money. This is like a cocaine habit, folks. When is it ever going to end? This study that's been referred to, every time we have at least a little bit of an uptick in the economy, the Chamber of Commerce cries, "The sky is falling, the sky is falling, we need more housing right of way." The population of Burlington is declining. I question whether we need to build any new housing. And this is insinuated to be low-income. These firms that you're bringing to town pay $11 an hour. At that wage level, regardless of your domestic relationship, if you have two adults in the household working, your total income's around $44,000 a year. At that wage level, all that you can afford is a $40,000 to $50,000 home. This isn't going to work for that. This is not low-income housing or modern-income housing. It's for people making a lot more than the people working in these factories that you bring here can afford. And I'm getting tired subsidizing everybody else. I pay to have the snow removed in front of my street. I pay for fire protection for myself. My neighbors do the same way. And you're asking us to do this for somebody else coming to town. You're asking us to do this for the hospital out there so they can recruit employees. Why doesn't the hospital pay for it? Why do I have to pay for it?
Thank you, sir.
Elaine Fuller, I live at 3115 Summer Street in Burlington. It's the last house in the city limits. I'm against the TIF financing for this housing division and I'm going to explain why. We built our house in that area in 1978. So for 39 years, we've had nothing but problems with sewage backup in our home. At one point in time, we had three and a half foot of sewage in our basement. They had to come out and disconnect our electric. We had to go live in a motel for a little over a week. We're out of our home because of this. We still, we've taken measures on our own. We've installed like a backflow preventer and different measures that we've done. We still have problems. Not to that extent, but as anyone knows, backflow preventer is not 100% sure. I guess my question is, I'm for housing. I'm for getting more housing in Burlington, but I just think you need to update your sewer system and lift station before you do that. One of my questions, I guess, is for anybody on the council that knows the age of that lift station and what updates have been done to it.
It's old. Nick, do you have some?
I don't have those specific answers off the top of my head, what age and when the improvements have been done. Don might be able to answer some of those questions, but it does have enough capacity to handle this extra housing in the lift station. To address any of the issues that you had in your house, I don't know what that would have been from.
Did you say it does have the capacity to handle a new housing division?
Correct.
An additional 30-plus homes?
34.
That's interesting.
Can I have, hold on a second. Don, can I have you, can you shine a little light on this for us at all? I would be able to answer some of her questions.
Well, I'm just talking off the top of my head, but I think the station was put in somewhere in a neighborhood of like 79. There have been problems at the station in the past. I think I commented about that the last time we talked about it. The problems typically occur during wet weather. Dry weather, there's, we haven't had any issues. I feel that the wet weather issues were compounded by problems that were found when investigated in the late 90s, right around 2000. The collection system had a lot of work done to it to correct the problems that they found as well as they went into a large number of homes that were using that collection system, that lift station, and found a number of sump pumps in those homes. Some of them, it was believed by staff, had been connected into the city's sanitary sewer system. So depending upon the soil condition, whether it was saturated or the high water table, some pumps will run more when the ground is saturated or if you have a high water table. And of course, if they're in a sanitary sewer system, which they're not supposed to be according to ordinance, then of course, there's putting a lot more water in the system. And that seemed to be the case when we have wet weather conditions. But after the repairs to the sewer system, after going in and inspecting the homes and ensuring that the septic, I'm sorry, the sump pumps were not going in the sanitary system, I believe the city actually went in and put what I call a secondary storm sewer in a particular area of development of existing homes. So the sump pumps had a sewer to discharge into rather than a sanitary. After doing all those things, the wet weather issues at the lift station significantly were reduced. My understanding with this development, we're talking about 34 homes. I don't believe it would be an issue during dry weather as far as wet weather conditions. I thought I heard Mr. Negrocki say here a few weeks back that they were including in the development, again, what I would call a secondary storm sewer, intended specifically to handle water from sump pumps that would be located in any of the houses that were within that development. If that sewer is properly installed, if it's tight, it's inspected, and everything's done accordingly, then wet weather event should not have a significant impact on the collection system that's already there and the lift station. And as far as the dry weather conditions with the sanitary, I would think that it should be able to handle that. Now, I do know the city is in the process of either preparing to do, or maybe they've already started, a sewer master plan. And the sewer master plan's purpose is specifically to evaluate the city's entire collection system. We have 12, what I'll call minor or residential lift stations, and we have three major lift stations. You can have the sewers that are downstream of a lift station. You could increase the size of this lift station, but the downstream sewer system has to be sized properly to receive that additional flow. So it's felt that the sewer master plan is something that is very much needed to look at the entire sewer system. May find that we have some sewers that are undersized, that'll have to be increased in size. And certainly on the upstream side, if we increase the size of a lift station, that'll have to be looked at very carefully to ensure. But that's going to be a big project and I don't know how long it's expected to take to complete the sewer master plan.
Probably 10 to 12 months.
10 to 12 months?
Correct.
Now, as far as improvements to the station, I believe that the pumps themselves are the same size as what was installed. I believe that we did in around 2000 with the sewer repairs that were made and looking at the sump pump situation, I believe that we did elect at that time to increase the size of the motors on those pumps. As far as how much that improved the output of that station, I think that it was probably nominal increase of flow, but it was done at the suggestion of the current engineer to put those larger motors in there. And so that's what we did.
Okay.
At that time.
Thank you, Don.
Can I, yeah, let me have you come back up and see.
I apologize, I'm normally a little more prepared than this, but I guess we built our home in 1978. There were no houses. That subdivision on the east side of Summer didn't exist. We started in 1978 when we built. Six months later, we had sewage in our basement. We were told we had to connect to the sewer. We were in the city limits. And at that time, when we started having problems, we asked to just disconnect, go to a septic system. We were denied that. So it isn't just, there's a problem out there and every time that we've ever called when we have a problem, it's the same, we get the same thing. The lift station is running at capacity, it cannot keep up. My concern is, you know, granted, you've had people disconnect their storm water and go into the storm sewer, that's fine. We still have problems. I just, I just think you're putting the cart before the horse in this whole process. I can't see him developing houses, but do you want three and a half foot of sewage in his new homes that he's building? I don't think so. I mean, something needs to be done to make sure that this isn't going to happen anymore with the sewer. Do any of you have any questions to ask me?
Did you have problems this weekend with the dream that we had this weekend?
We haven't so far. Like I said, we have a backflow preventer and you yourself know that could go at any point in time. But when, but when it is working, and we know from living there, when we have rains like this, and especially like a lot of rain all at one time, the whole house is shut down. You don't use your sinks, you don't flush the toilets, you don't take showers, you don't do laundry. It's just, you don't do anything. And so the property value of our house, it goes down.
But you made it, but no water, no backups this weekend though, huh?
No, not as of yet. But we, but we've taken measures. Our floor drains in our basement have steel plates over them. We have like stand pipes and we have the backflow preventer.
Was there any point this weekend that you weren't able to use water in the house because the...
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was asking, because backwater...
And we'll talk back and forth and say, do we, should we use water today or not use water? Well, and then we'll look in the ditch in the front. That's kind of one of our, if the ditch in the front has water, then we know there's a problem. If we really think we're going to have a problem, we go over and look at the manholes to see if there's water coming back out of those. That's when we know we're really going to have a problem.
What's your, what's your address again?
3115 Summer.
What's your name again?
Elaine Fuller.
What happens with the backwater valve is the, it's a flapper. And when water starts to back up, it shuts that flapper. Okay, it shuts it out off outside the house. If they run any water in the house, that flapper won't open to let it out. So it's going to back up into the drains. That's why she has those risers in the floor drains so that it prevents it. Back in early 2000, I went to her house when she had sewage in her basement. And it was shortly, that was about the time that they put the backwater valve in, right?
Yes.
Around 2001.
The city agreed to let us do that and they inspected it. The city agreed to let us do that, and they inspected it.
So she, she's continuing to have problems. The water is, there is so much water that it's shutting off her backwater valve. If it wasn't for that, it wouldn't be coming up in her basement. She's, she's probably in the worst place she could be on the system. She's the first that's going to get the problem, and, and it's gonna back up further on down the line.
Unfortunately, nobody told us that when we built, or, you know, we didn't know.
Does anybody have any other questions, Elaine?
No, thank you.
I, I do wanna say that the last time that we did have an issue was just a few years ago, and it may, I've lost track of, over thirty-nine years, I forget which time is what, but we did approach the city about, again, disconnecting from the sewer system and putting in a septic, and we had inspectors come out and everything was good to do it, and then we were denied permission to do that. So I guess one of my questions would be if this housing development goes through, and we continue to have problems, can we just disconnect from city sewer? We don't wanna be a dumping station for all the other houses.
I think that's something we'll have to look at.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'll be, I'll be passing that on, well, I'm sure I won't be, I won't be passing that information on as we move forward to try to make sure that you're, you're comfortable with what, what is moving forward.
Okay. And I understand you have an after meeting if we have some further questions we wanna ask in regard to items not on the agenda.
Yeah, afterwards, if you wanna make a statement, which we're almost there, so.
Okay, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Real quick, I'll address some of those questions or concerns. So here, you know, I've been working with the city staff since last August to make sure I, I wanna make sure that all those concerns and, and things do get addressed up front. So I have retained Klinger and Associates to do the engineering, and they've met with a lot of the streets and sewer guys to ensure that. They went out and inspected the, the lift station, and there's a force main that runs up South Fourteenth as well. From a stormwater perspective, if you look on the very bottom left corner, there's an outlot. It's about a third of an acre. Yep, right there. And Don is correct in that I will be running a collector system. I'm not sure the proper term on it, but through the, behind the curb, through the front yards of everybody's house, that they can tie their, their sump pumps directly into. Because like Don said, you know, I think on the development to the north, a lot of guys tie it in directly to the sewer. And so that created a, more water into the sewer system. So all that water, though, that'll be in that will drain to Outlot One. That'll be about a four-foot excavated deep detention pond, should you say, so that that water, the storm water would drain to that. And then if it did back up, then it outflows. Another thing on stormwater is the ditch that runs along the east side of Summer Street. We're going to reshape that. It was, when they went out and did the survey, the elevation sites, a lot of water holds in spots where it shouldn't to keep, keep water flowing. So there's a, if I can. There's a outlet, I wanna say it's right about up in here, that drains, and this ditch isn't shaped properly, so through construction, we're gonna reshape this ditch here, and then down to the south as well, a little bit reshape that to keep, keep water moving, and to prevent that hopefully from backing up in the future. So there's some, some other things that we will be doing too, so just wanted to, to address that.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the audience? Would you, would you come to the podium, please? Yes, please.
Okay, so.
Well, they won't be able to hear you till you get to the microphone, just so everybody.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
When, when you're, when, when you're talking about reshaping that exactly, are you redirecting the runoff water to go on the west side of Summer Street?
It, it continued to, to run south.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm sure Councilman Scott, he's familiar with my situation. He's, was mayor at one point in time. So I would, I would hope that maybe you would look into this and see the history behind this whole situation and what's taken place over thirty-nine years. And please really reconsider doing this. I'm not against the housing. Just upgrade the facility before you do it. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Counsel?
I do, I do want to mention, fundamentally opposed to TIF for residential. I haven't said that all along, but the, the, the TIF that we're going to approve, there is another step, I've mentioned it a couple of times tonight, the staff has, there, there will be a development agreement that comes along with this, with, with the TIF. We need to go into that understanding that we're, we're not going to sign a blank check. That there needs to be time limits assigned, and there needs to be dollar limits, dollar limits assigned. Since we haven't been able to come up with a TIF policy, then we're going to have to take it under consideration when we do the development agreement. I was hoping to do that tonight with the, with this TIF agreement and amend the TIF, the, the TIF agreement, but since, or, yeah, the, the division of taxes, I was hoping to do it during that, but I, I'm going to leave that for the development agreement. And I think we all need to think very hard about this because it is setting a precedent. And we've got to let the developer know what, what we're going to allow. And not giving any false hopes for any two-ten-year periods or that, even though he's going, even though he plans to do two phases, that we've gotta decide whether we're going to do two phases of TIF or not, and whether we're going to have to make two agreements, two individual agreements. We need to know all that before we go into this. This is, this is not something that we've, we've never done this before. We've done TIF before, but not a TIF rebate. And we, we, I'm very nervous about this. We've got, there's, we're, we're having such a success in development now. I, I don't know why we need to add additional incentives. And I'd hate to see people make huge investments like he's going to make and not be able to get a return because we are having such a successful development period right now, housing development. We've, we've got nearly two hundred housing units being planned for, just for the downtown. We need to keep all that in mind while we, as we progress here.
For sure. Counsel, do you guys have any other questions? All right, let's vote. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor, I move the approving lease agreement between the City of Burlington and Burnley Community School to receive for the use of a portion of the property at twenty-one thirty-two Madison Avenue for a disc golf project.
Sorry. Just a second, Mr. Teslin?
As we discussed earlier, we're looking at adding to our existing disc golf course in Dankour Park by expanding into the area behind James Madison School. I'll put a map up on the overhead here. There's been a lot of support, community support driven behind this as well, but looking to add a little more different course layout within the wooded area behind James Madison. Again, this is on the school property. Dankour Park lies to the south here, which is city property. The school board has approved this agreement at their meeting last week, but this would allow us to put in nine additional holes to our existing course for a little different use for those that do disc golf. That could be a great addition to our existing course and allow a different challenge for users, so if you have any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer.
Antoinette's pretty excited about it, just for the record. Anybody from the audience, any questions or concerns?
How much money are we gonna spend on this?
We have existing baskets. It's gonna be primitive sites. We're not anticipating other than some staff time of getting things erected, working with some of the local citizens on it.
Are we putting down a slab for the launch area?
No, not at this time.
I think it's awesome.
Or the tee box, I guess it's.
How dare you?
There has been some local fundraising efforts to upgrade our existing baskets, and that's gone very well, so I think if there's any upgrades needed in the future, we'd probably look towards some of those groups as well to help us out and see if there's any other improvements, but we will have some staff time cleaning up the area, clearing out some of the area, but we do have some existing tee boxes that we could, or tees, not tees, but holes that we could use.
Right on, right.
Okay.
Good deal. It's gonna be good. Counsel, we good?
Antoinette, I know you're excited about it.
All right, let's vote on it. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
All right, looking forward to disco. This time, we're gonna entertain comments from the audience, if there's anybody here that, you see. You guys just came for the party? All right.
Been working on it for a long time, and it's real funny to have.
All right, all right, well done. Thanks for coming down.
Thanks.
Anybody else from the audience, any comments? You guys feel fantastic. Mr. Crowner?
Mike Crowner, Burlington, Iowa. I just, I wanna speak for this lady behind us with the sewer situation. Understand it, and we need to address it and get it taken care of, but at the same time, the only way Burlington has direction to grow anymore is south, so regardless of what happens or when it happens, it's coming that way, might be, if, if, if we're optimistic about Burlington getting better.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience? Helen, did you have something else?
It's my understanding that the city can't be held responsible for damage to your property when they aren't aware that there's been a problem. And like I said, if you check the history of what all has taken place between the, the city sewer system and the, and the city and, and myself and my husband, you'll see there's been a past history. And it's duly noted, I mean, I have two file boxes full of documentation showing about anything you'd wanna know that's gone on with this, so I'm, I mean, I, it's not like you haven't been aware of it. I mean, the newer people on the board, maybe they don't know anything about it, but I, I really do encourage you just check into the history of this before you agree to have an additional houses on that outdated system. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience?
Hi, Kathy Little. My mother's property is at the intersection where they're doing the roundabout. And we've had a lot of problems this week with the traffic, with the signage. It's starting to slow down a little bit, but we just were informed that the work driveway we have is going to be closed off during construction. And I just would like to know what the plans are for us, because we do use that in the course of our business.
Here's the guy to ask.
The extent of the construction project will go past your driveway. I don't know at what point. As far as providing any alternative, we probably would have to move it back on the shoulder and then provide you access that way. Part of the plans call for an approach being added to your driveway, so that will probably take out some of that functionality for you. But I, I don't know the timetable on when that is.
But while it's completely closed off, how are we supposed to get in and out?
I, can I contact you at, not at this meeting specifically?
Can I ask why we weren't contacted before this came about?
I don't have an answer for that. I'll have to, can I take your contact information afterwards and call you tomorrow?
It just would have been nice if we had known what was going on before it started happening, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Anybody else from the audience with comments? Mr. Teslin?
I guess, only thing, Greater Bridge Race is coming up, early registration by next Monday, so we encourage people to sign up for the bridge run, whether the five-k run walk or ten-k run allows to donate to the pool or Young House or YMCA Women's Shelter, so good opportunity to get out, up Snake Alley, across the bridge for people that wanna walk or bike it, or walk or run it. But it's a, a good event, encourage people to participate.
Right on. You gonna run it again this year? You gonna beat the city manager?
You gonna get him? You gonna get him?
Beat the city manager, or otherwise we're gonna talk about you. Clerk of clerks. Antoinette Wilson?
If I'm not mistaken, I think the farmer's market starts up again on Thursday.
That'd be correct.
Yeah? Is that correct? Oh, that's exciting. So that's happening this Thursday, starting back up again, and I think that's, that's really all I have for now.
I think they have a, a theme, something about May the Fourth.
Oh, may the Fourth be with you.
Yeah.
And you actually said that out loud.
I did.
All right. Gonna be a party tonight. Mr. Scott?
Can I borrow your computer for a second? We received this email today, and I didn't get it on mine, but I wanted to share it with, with the citizens to the city council. I just wanted to inform the council, the property taxes at thirty-nine twenty-nine West Avenue for the year two thousand and four was one thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars. The assessed value for the current year is two hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred dollars. Property tax alone with homestead will be five thousand and forty-five dollars. The assessment for the road will add an additional three thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars per year for fifteen years. Currently, that figure, figures out to six hundred and ninety-five dollars a month for property taxes and assessments. I assume it will only go up every year. My mother receives only social security and still paying mortgage on the property. So basically, for the next fifteen years, we are looking at eight thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Seriously, I seriously doubt my mom will live to be a hundred the year the assessment will be paid off. Meanwhile, meanwhile, you're tearing out the West Burlington extension for Roundabout, and she is watching from her living room window. I just thought you'd like to know the road that she's paid for, about half of it's being tore out, so. That's part of what our discussion was, and decision was a couple of weeks ago, but I just wanted to share that with everybody. That's it, thank you.
Mayor Proton?
I'm good, thanks.
I'm good, thank you.
Assistant city manager?
I don't have anything.
Chief Teslin, I think.
Big chief.
I'll give you a little handout here, but in light of the article, the Uber article, which was really informative, and I hope Uber does come to Burlington, there's been legislation that regulates that. And they did that, I think, because all the cities had different ordinances, and it was being regulated differently in different areas, so just recently, they passed, you can look it up yourself, it's three twenty-one N, and it's in Nor, to address Uber in these transportation networks. And I got a little brochure here, a little thing I printed out today from the DOT to kinda help you explain that. But with that said, there's gonna be some, some changes to our local taxi cab ordinance to kinda try to make it more fair. And first and foremost will be the chauffeur's license. We require that now for cab drivers. And as long as they don't have seven or more passengers, or actually seven or more seats in the vehicle, then they wouldn't be required to have a chauffeur's license, so that's one of the preemptive things the state did as well, so. And this kinda explains some of that here, and I just wanted to hand that out to you, so. some of that here, and I just wanted to hand that out to you, so, 'cause I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions about this. I know I'm starting to field a lot of questions, so I can only assume that you are, so be some information to help you. But as far as Uber and our ability to regulate that, it's not gonna happen. It's being all regulated by the Iowa Department of Transportation. They do the background checks, they do the licensing, the fees, the permitting, the work, so doesn't pertain to taxis per se, completely different, but it does pertain to Uber if they come to Burlington.
Appreciate that, though.
Yep. And this primarily addresses the chauffeur's license and requirements, so as this thing moves along, we'll keep you informed. Our city attorney right now is doing some strike-throughs on our current ordinance, and bring that forward. So thank you.
Could you, you talk about, do we have people going to the academy soon?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we have three that are gonna go to the academy. We're gonna swarm in tomorrow here at City Hall at three o'clock.
Three o'clock tomorrow.
Three o'clock tomorrow. Josh Riffle, Clayton Beckman, and Joshua Jacobson.
Josh Riffle?
Yeah, yeah, great guy.
Yeah, man, he's awesome.
Fantastic, so yeah, that's all gonna happen tomorrow too, and then they'll leave for the academy.
I hope I get home in time, okay.
Chief, would you give a message to your wife?
Thank you.
Tell her she did real good with that kid, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you know, I noticed that myself. Gotta give her credit.
There you go, there you go. All righty.
I move that we adjourn.
Yeah, yeah, who is, Jim's gonna be gone Wednesday, two people to do the radio show. Okay, Tim Scott, anybody else?
I can't, I see.
I'll meet, I'll meet you.
I'm done.
Okay, gotta get a motion, sir.
We have to what? I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Thought I did that.
Second, second.
Second, second. Kathleen.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Okay, come to beautiful Burlington, even Rob Sessman can get married.